I think he ran to the finish. In total, by the time they were finished, and based on what we were told, it was going to be an hour. The mayor, sorry, Vanessa announced that the mayor would address, the chairman would address, and the response, everything will be packed into one hour. Everyone heard that. And so we allow for them to present. We allow for, when the fact-finding folks had some questions that they needed to follow up. And when they started to ask, it was like forty-two minutes into the hour. By the time, when persons started to get agitated, by the time they were ready to open for questions or testimonies from persons, the chair then allotted time, saying it's one minute for a person to be able to speak and address the delegation. If this is a town hall meeting, town hall meeting is about the people. Therefore, the local leaders needed to address that gathering at least in a five-minute time. That's the protocol. And then at the end, another five minutes to wrap up or respond to what you would have heard. In total, ten minutes, but you allow for the people. So if you were given the people the time to speak, then you wouldn't have had this problem. However, it ended abruptly because I was interrupted. I said all of this to say, and I'm going to close here. I want to address the US Embassy. I want to strongly address the US Embassy and to say to the US Embassy that this fact-finding delegation is biased. They do not represent transparency. They do not represent what the US is about, which is the people and allowing the people to have a voice. This fact-finding mission clearly showed to me that they are partisan. They come to see who represents what. And I don't know if they're well-spoken. Well, I suppose that it was before, because when they came, they went into the mayor's office for twenty-five minutes. I don't know what they talked about, but they came late. And instead of coming into the chamber where people, residents of Linden, were waiting for them, they went to the mayor's office for twenty-five minutes before they come to hear from the people who were waiting on them from since three o'clock. They came into the chamber at five, somewhere around after five. That's when they came into the chamber. So I want the US Embassy to take note and to understand how displeased and how unrepresented as a section of society is, and most of Linden, because these are the residents we're talking about. Yes, the leaders are elected by the people, but then this is a town hall meeting where people speak, ordinary citizens, and they did not entertain them. I'll leave it there and allow for the others to share their thoughts. We have with us Mr. Orin Wilson, who is the Prime Minister representative, and he will talk about some of the, well, we will address some of the areas that they were spoken to at length. And Mr. Wilson will speak to the contracts. After which, we will move to Mr. Canterbury, that's Jaren Canterbury, Jaren, and he is going to deal with the discrimination issue that was raised. We will then move to Mr. Rutherford, who will talk about what was raised concerning the television station. And then Ms. Sancha Ali. Mr. Rutherford is the CEO for Nissel, and Ms. Ali is a councillor in the municipality, a councilwoman. We have Mr. Andrew, Mr. Keith Ferrier, who is going to deal with what they spoke on the extrajudicial killing. And Mr. Andrew Forsythe, who will address the issue of the grant and what they raised about Millie Zaidout. Mr. Wilson, take it over, your thoughts.
Basically, listeners of viewers, good night, Mackenzie and Wisma, and Linden. First of all, I want to echo the sentiment of my colleague, Mr. Gaspar. The fact-finding mission crew from the US wasn't fear. You're not fear. Just imagine the municipality at Linden. We have sixteen councillors. And you will sit up in a room for twenty-five minutes with fourteen PNC councillors discussing only with them. After twenty-five minutes, you came to the auditorium or the hall, and you give the regional chairman approximately twenty-five minutes to speak. You give the mayor twenty-five minutes to speak. And then you open the floor to give us one minute. When Mr. Gaspar, who's the town clerk, opened the floor, it was a whole balloon, heckling and a whole bunch of other stuff to get him off. But you know what? I want to rebalance some of the claims that the regional chairman, right, and the mayor is talking about. Basically, in 2015, the regional chairman talked about only the PPP tender board operates is there, operating at Region Ten. And the other parties are not getting a chance to get contract. And only the PPP members is on the tender board. But I want to remind the regional chairman, in 2015 to early 2020, the whole tender board was PNC operations members. They had one member, no member from the PPP was on that tender board. From 2015 to early 2020. At that time, the chairman was Renz Moran, and the REO was Orange Garden. And we then had one member from the PPP was there. When the PPP take government in middle 2020, after the whole balloon, all right, they had one member from the PNC was still on the tender board, Keisha McCain. And because of the untried behavior they gave Keisha McCain, Keisha McCain decided to come over to the PPP. So Keisha McCain wasn't a PPP member. Keisha McCain was a PNC member, right? And she was there on the tender board. And as a PNC councillor too, representing the PNC at the municipality, at the RDC. So when the regional chairman rise up in that room tonight to say that no PNC persons was not on the tender board, they will add PNC persons there, but switch over to the PPP at that time, in middle 2020. I want to dispense the claims that the regional chairman is talking about. The regional chairman is saying that the contracts only given to PPP cronies and friends. That's not true. The regional chairman brother is a contractor at the RDC. And this government, this PPP government, accepted, never rebunged it, and dealing with it, doing business with him. And delivering goods and services to the people of this community in Region Ten. And the regional chairman has the audacity to come there to negative fact-finding people and tell them, only the people in this room, the PPP people in this room, is get contract. And the regional chairman brother is service all the machines and equipments at the RDC and procuring all the papers and pens and markers to the RDC. And he has the audacity to say that only the PPP people and friends and cronies get contracts, all right? The deputy mayor, who is not the deputy mayor right now?
Dominic.
Dominic Blair, right? This government gave Dominic Blair millions of dollars in contract to GWI. Been digging well at Rockstone and etc. And he stood up to say that he don't get no contract, and only the PPP people get any contract. And he's the deputy mayor of the municipality, right? We have a certain member of parliament, brother, just got a one over fifty million dollars in project yesterday at the Municipal Public Works, right there in Linden to do roads right there. So how come, how come these PNC officials could indicate to the fact-finding crew from the US that they don't get contracts and the contract only give to the PPP cronies? We have documents, we have papers to show the fact-finding team that all these officials are saying that only PPP people get contracts. They will be ashamed. But you know what? The fact-finding team didn't give us a chance, didn't give us a chance to make no presentation tonight. A matter of fact, they gave us one minute to talk.
One minute.
And we could not.
Which is unfair.
We could not show the team and reason together truth and lie. We could not have done it. We could not have done it. So I want the people of Linden to understand that it was a team from the US, a fact-finding team came here tonight, right? And didn't give the PPP official here a chance to indicate what's happening and how Region Ten has run. We didn't get a chance. And we are here tonight to rebalance all the statements and all the lies that the regional chairman, the mayor, and the deputy mayor said tonight here. So we want Linden to know. And we, and I want the regional chairman to know and understand that I don't have authority. I want the mayor to know that I don't have authority, but they must be truthful. They must be truthful to the people. They must be truthful with the people. And that is my take for now.
Wonderful, and that's where we're going to show them where we can finish in one hour and give everybody a chance to speak at five minutes, when they were giving us one. Yes, Jaren?
Good evening, viewers. Today was a very sad and historical day for Linden Guyana. We were visited this afternoon by a fact-finding team or alleged fact-finding team from the USA. And that team, that team would have presented themselves to me underneath a sheep's cloak. The team, when they arrived at the location, they chose to meet with the fourteen APNU members or councillors alone in a very small room for about, let's say, twenty-five minutes to half an hour. After that meeting, then they came to address the persons, especially the Lindeners, residents that were there, looking and waiting to see what this fact-finding mission has to offer. When they arrived, from the very start, I would have observed that it wasn't a fact-finding mission. They were not here to find facts. They were here with their own purpose. Their purpose was there to spread misinformation. The same persons that they were meeting in the room with was the person that had to address or lay the issues for the members of Linden. So I would like to ask the members of Linden, what do you think of such a fact-finding mission? What do you think of such persons in our community? Because during that meeting, every single person that had a genuine concern was being stopped from talking. And every person that was in that room prior to that meeting was given over a twenty minutes to speak. Yeah. And one of the main things that they mentioned was that Afro-Gayanese persons are being discriminated in Region Ten. Also, they said persons who do not seem to be of the same political party are being discriminated. And I would like to say that's not true, because I'm Afro-Gayanese.
So am I.
And even though I might support a certain political party, I know of other Afro-Gayanese that do not support my political party. But they are not being discriminated in this Region Ten. And also, a next thing to notice that I would observe that the president's initiatives is mostly aimed at persons that are not of a certain political party. The president makes sure that he addresses the needs of each and every Guyanese, regardless of race, regardless of culture, regardless of anything else, regardless of your political persuasion, your religion. So I do not know where this claim of discrimination came from. Also, I would like to note that it was the same, the current regional chairman Darren Adams, that would have discriminated against me in 2016 and in 2017, when I would have applied at the same RDC for a job. He made a particular statement claiming that if I do not support his party or his youth group, I will not be held by his government. So I do not think a person that lives in Linden and goes about their everyday life is being discriminated by anyone. Currently, I've seen so many projects of development in Region Ten. And we had a fact-finding mission, and we had persons, Lindeners, presenting facts or so-called facts, misinformation. And they were presenting this information towards a group of persons that we had no idea where they came from. And whilst these persons were identifying themselves, to me personally, it seemed a bit shady as to who these characters were. Also, I really can't understand that such a fact-finding mission would look to seek to speak to each and every person or a good majority of the community. The fact-finding mission, it did not seem interested in actually engaging with residents. And that's very sad for us today in Linden.
Very much, very much. And I share your sentiments.
Also, also to note, I would have observed there was a lot of heckling and name-calling by elected officials of Linden. So it made me wonder, regardless of where we would have placed our vote on election, it made me wonder, if these persons are really worthy of being elected in Region Ten, in Guyana, or anywhere in the world. So I would close off with just saying that because what happened today was very sad. And what we all can do is just pray and continue on our road of development. That's all we can do.
So in summary, what we heard on the discrimination was basically you identifying where the regional chairman discriminated against you, yourself. And I know, and I understand the nature of the beast. That is the nature of the beast. I understand Keith Ferrier will talk to us, because they raised on the extrajudicial killing. Keith, you were in the belly of the beast too. You don't have to fear for us to say it. We say it, you understand? Because my brother over here spoke to Keisha McCain. And that's where the anger is coming from. When the very people that once supported them did not see, they started to speak out of the injustice, and that is what they didn't want to hear. Go ahead, Keith.
Good night, residents of Linden. Good night to my colleagues here and all the viewers that are here watching this program tonight. I was at a town hall this evening for a town hall meeting to share my views and to share my sentiments and to speak about Linden at large to some people who said they are fact-finding committees. And I personally feel if you are from a fact-finding committee and you want the only truth, where are you surdrunk to come to know the truth? You should give the people a chance to speak. And we didn't see that when, tonight. Because first to begin with, we were there since three o'clock. Because you were prompt in the time we rolled and started three, we were there, sitting there, four o'clock. After a while, I see some people arrive. They didn't even came to the boardroom to greet the people that are waiting to see them for such a long, lengthy time. They went immediately to the mayor, the deputy mayor, the regional chairman, and his deputy. And the People's National Congress or Reform, whatever, they went to the councils with them. And that alone of itself shows, I know the facts you really came here to fight out. But what was even more touching is to know that after lengthy discussion with these people in the room, what transpired here, I don't know. But all I can think is after they came and I see their actions, I realize when they were brief, they came hyped up, and they listened and gave their people a chance. The program was chaired by Ms. Vanessa Kison. Our protocol is observed, yes, we have to give officers the respect to the mayor, the regional chairman, the deputy mayor, and the deputy regional chairman. Ms. Kison stated that they will speak for a while, and then the floor be open to everybody to speak. Because these people are here to hear the facts. And as my colleague echoed, I am one who also think or feel that the character is shitty, because it look uneasy indeed, you know? But after the mayor allowed the regional chairman spoke for us, and he spoke for lengthy, the two of them then combined alone in like forty-two to forty-five minutes. Then they were questioned by the so-called, I should say, fact-finding committee people from there. Within they finished speaking, the hour was up. So there I want to know if we, the residents, will have the time to speak. But what really touched me more is because, I'm not ashamed to say, I know, I've worked for the People's National Congress. I know the People's National Congress. I know them well. And when they see certain faces in there, they didn't want to give you a chance to speak. Because you know, they are the people that peddle misinformation the best. They are the best in giving people false information. And they had to do it tonight than the people that were listening then. However, what touched me tonight is when the mayor spoke about extrajudical killing. He even went back and speak about it, the time of disturbance here. And the way he put it over, I want to tell the people of Linden tonight, even some of the youths out there, they are me of horror, me are never horror. It was a very sad moment for Linden. I am of a cosmopolitan background. I have an Indian mother and a Negro father. And we had to be indoors, atrocities that was committed in this place against the people of East Indian ethnicity. They had to flee, swim, die, flee, and get out of Linden by any means possible. And the good mayor said, there was a little misunderstanding in Nissel with them and foreign people dying. And after that, they retaliated, blowing up seventy much people on the Sunchakman Ranch. But I want you to know that the People's National Congress people are so cunning and subtle, more than anybody when it comes to these kind of jobs. They will never allow, I always, and I will say tonight with no apology whatsoever, they will never allow nobody to get close to Sunchakman Ranch. More of the plant upon Sunchakman Ranch. So right away, reflect that that was your own bomb that they probably bring in to throw something up on them. And I can say it with no apology whatsoever. But when we can speak about extrajudical killing, the record is clear. Because if they want to go back, we can go back to Far the Dark. We can go back when they robbed the toll wall of one of the most fortified sons on Friday, the thirteenth of June, killing Dr. Walter Ravi. I was at Walter Ravi funeral as a young man, when C.L.R. James had banned Dr. Walter Ravi from Renton, Jamaica, in nineteen sixty-eight. He was at Walter Ravi funeral. And he said allegations at the level against the People's National Congress with a bomb blast of Dr. Walter Ravi, he wrongly condemned New Orleans. And so many people echoed sentiment. And what was more sad, they sent his brother to prison for that. We can go on with Mr. Lamazon from Princess Street. We can go on with Vincent Teakle. We can go all the way. So if these people want to speak about extrajudical killing, the people out there in viewers, check the track record. Check the track record. I have been along the People's Progressive Party for just a little while, and I want to tell you, they are a people of progress and a people of vision and a people that want to bring prosperity to the life of every Guyanese. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ferrier. And we will hear from Mr. Andrew Rutherford. But you know, to use up your, maximize your five minutes, don't go over the part. I think we established what went on at the meeting. Here, Mr. Rutherford, you will be talking about the subject that they raised on the television station. Talk to us.
Good evening, viewers. Thank you, Gaspar. And you know, it was my responsibility to attend that session this afternoon. And equally, it's my responsibility to let the viewing public know the facts. Let the viewing public understand that the leaders, and look the leaders in the eyes, that the leaders were not capable of putting together facts for that mission. I doubt whether that was really a fact-finding mission. It was a mission that was searching for attorney facts. And I would want to speak to the area of the television station. The Honorable Mayor, his worship, did went at length, and it took over ten minutes explaining about the television station. And it indeed, I would want to say, I would be pleased if you could have more of one television station in Linden. But there was a golden opportunity in 2016. A committee was put together. There were fifty members of that committee. And luckily, I was the odd man out. Odd in the sense that there were fourteen PNC persons on that committee. The Honorable Mayor was able to attract six, so that was seven. And God rest the death Sandra Adams, she was able to attract another six. So they were there splitting, seven, seven. I was warned that I should vote for the Sandra side. But everyone knew that I would have been voted, and maybe this is the first time I'm saying publicly, I would have said it so many times to people, that I might would have been definitely voting for the Sharon Salmond faction. When the Sandra Adams faction saw that they could not have rerouted the whole election system, they commented on everything that the election cannot go on, and eventually break up the meeting. That was a golden opportunity. And they must look the people of Linden in the eyes and tell them, you know what? We had a chance to have this station as a community station. And just because of a selfish agenda, and I repeat, selfish agenda, can the mayor, who was only about controlling, and I would have given my vote, yes, because I thought he was the better side, can he not just relax a bit and allow that station to be a community station? The other faction was of the view that the pressing sitting regional chairman must be the chair of that, of the body. So there was a golden opportunity for this station to be a community-based station. How can they now look the people in the eyes and even at length? What can you have lies? You can only do it in a long time. You cannot say the facts to tell the people that this was denied them.
By the DVD.
By the PPP. They had a full chance. And what the public should know too, is that in addition to the maybe mismanagement administratively, there were equipment and monies voted for that very station. What was done with those monies? And youth in the public, you should look at your leaders. You voted for them, you put them in office, but look at them and ask them, where were the monies voted for that project? Why were they not able to sit and say, you know what? Let us have, whoever would lead the committee? And we can progress to have this station as a people's station. The regional chairman didn't mention about agriculture. But we must know that this country is fifty odd years as a republic. And we must understand that the regional administration budget had just about nothing for agriculture through the years, through the twenty-eight years of PNC time. And let's say we can start at nineteen eighty with the new constitution, the regional system. It had no catering for agriculture. That came about in somewhere around twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And I was always worried that all kind of region, I was given my excuse as a councillor. I saw up down them, Mr. Sharon. They were saying that you will take money from administration and take money from infrastructure to put in agriculture. Where Region Ten is with endless fertile soil, and they could not have seen the vision before twenty sixteen or seventeen, somewhere around there, to have an agriculture budget. So they cried out about all the things that would have stopped in agriculture. It's a cry and a shame on the very administration, the opposition, who is telling us about the bad of PPP right now. I want to feel that the glorious opportunity existed, you know? And the opposition could already speak to faults in government when they had five years. To me, every time they speak, they seem to be subtracting that five years. But they must realize that they were in office for five years. What did they give to the people of Linden in those five years?
Nothing.
I would want to tell the people of Linden, those very leaders that my colleagues speak to us now, they were rapping for themselves, and they continued to rap for themselves. I close my case.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rutherford, and Nissel CEO. Ms. Councilwoman Sancha Ali, talk to us about, or respond. Let's debunk the notion of the closure of the nursing school.
Thank you, Mr. Gaspar, TC. Good evening, Linden, Region Ten, and thank you for having us. As we all would have been discussing earlier, that there was a fact-finding mission here this evening. And as a councillor, I would personally like to express my dissatisfaction in the way the meeting was carried out. First of all, I was not informed that there was a mission coming. I got the news by way of a phone call out of Kamakaminds, and so I made my way there. They spoke about several things, and one of those things had to do with the closing of the nursing school, as they said. But I'd like to share some information that was shared before, and just in case we would have missed it, I would like to just remind you, the nursing school was not closed. What the government would have found out was that when we take in nurses, they were made to understand that after their training, at some point, they would have to go out in the outline areas to work. And so what we found out is that they would have been saying they have kids, they can't go, and they would come with every reason why they cannot go to serve in those areas. And because we would have had enough nurses in Linden, the government made provision for those nurses, student nurses from the outline areas to come in, the majority of them, and train them so they go back home to serve, and we don't have to go through the issue of our nurses not wanting to go and serve in those areas. So that is an absolute lie. The nursing school was never closed. The government did put a structure in place to ensure that we don't have to deal with sending our nurses out of town. We also have the hybrid nursing program going on right now. Where nursing, the nursing school is never closed. We still have nurses right now going to school. They have hybrid, some classes, in-person classes, and some online. And so it's an absolute lie. And it's disturbing to know that we had to sit in that meeting this evening to hear so many lies come out and was not given an opportunity to even respond to the allegations made. and was not given an opportunity to even respond to, to the allegations made by the mayor and the, the regional chairman this evening. Um, and to, to take it further, T C, I would like to also mention the disrespect that I saw this evening towards you. In the council, we had a, a woman removing the microphone from in front of you by the name of, I think Nicole Telford. Um, and that was very disgusting. I don't know who gave her permission. The other thing I realized is that the mission members from the mission, they thought it best to speak to you in any manner. And I think that was very uncootin', because as the head of the house, you are, um, nobody comes to your home and speak to you in that manner. If you were dissatisfied with the treatment in the council, they could have nicely got up and walked away. They didn't do that. What they sought to do was to get up and I believe the regional chairman was shouting, shut up, sit down and all that. Their behavior was uncoot, which is just like them. They are anti-progress and anti-development. I noticed the head of the delegation would have said, um, she mentioned something that jumped out to me. She mentioned that they were not biased to the beginning. I don't know why someone who's unbiased would need to mention that in the first place. Um, secondly, she was mentioning that only people who have something to hide was dis, was disrupting. Nobody was disrupting anything. So her mentioning those things alone was a sign to me that there was, uh, coloring in the well already, if you may say. And so we would like to say to Linden that this was not a fair meeting. And that is why we're here and we're here to respond to that which was said this evening and to give you, Lindeners, the facts of what is really happening and to debunk those allegations that were made this evening. We know that our government is a government for all of the people. We know that our government has been serving, we have been sharing the information all around here this evening. And the facts, you can't hide it. I would have shared this with every member of the delegation, speaking about the, um, positive impact that a government would have been doing in Region Ten.
And most of them left it on the desk.
And right, correct. Most of them walked away and leaving.
But they asked for evidence.
Correct. And while they were asking for, for evidence. So I'd like to, to let Linden know that we are not here to sit and to allow a fact-finding team, or at least so they call themselves, to come into our home, to come into our tongue and to spew this foolishness, have the mayor and the, the regional chairman to spew this foolishness, not even speaking to residents, a regular man and, and woman on the ground. They're not speaking to them, but they're coming to engage politicians on the ground without even informing the other side. If you're gonna hear from one side, then at least invite the other side. Like I said, I was not informed. But I know what is happening. What is really happening is after the local government elections, recently held local government elections, the numbers scared them. Because we moved from over four hundred to over two thousand. And so now they're running scared because twenty twenty-five is very scary for them. And so they're only left with the option of coming with this kind of tactic, which is what they've been doing in Linden. So while I wrap up, I'd like to say to the fact-finding mission, while you are here to find facts, please try to find some facts on the elections that the, um, opposition was trying to steal, that they would have rigged. Find some facts on that. Uh, find some facts on what really transpired with the monies that was allocated, that were sent in for the rebuilding or reconstruction of the One Mile Primary School. Find some facts on that. Um, find some facts on the, uh, who really caused the death of the three young men on the bridge. Find some facts on that. And while you're at it, do some more digging. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And, um, I just wanted to touch on one thing that you had mentioned, um, that slipped me when the leader, Ms. De Dawkins, said that, um, only people who have something to hide would want to disturb or disturb, um, the meeting. That was disrespectful, but they didn't saw that as being disrespectful. But when I stood up and I said to them, I'm not sure if I should welcome you to Linden. They thought that that was disrespectful. I understand that that was the agitation that caused the delegation member to jump up and shout at me as if I'm his son or I'm some little boy or some dog. You understand? And that I would not tolerate.
Absolutely not.
That I would not tolerate because the protocol would dictate. When I came to, as, as the town clerk to this town, I'd made cautiously visit to the regional chairman. And I was welcomed by the, uh, regional chairman. I did not expect it and I told him that, I was very honest. I told him I did not expect this welcome. You understand? And he himself said that he hoped we would work together and he would join forces, talking to his, um, comrade over at the, the, the other end, being in the person of the mayor, Sharm Salomon, to let us work together for the development of Linden. Yes, but why didn't the delegation do the same? They don't understand protocol? You come and you went to the mayor, come over to the town clerk, ask who councillor in here from the other side? You didn't ask, they are councillors on the other side. But nobody knew. I learned from Facebook, the councillor got called in Kokwani. I will hear now from the party's representative and the person of Andrew Forsyte, who will talk about the grant that they raised and the Meliside Out story. Tell us about it, the truth about the lands where the Meliside Out, who it really went to? Because I said that the, the government did roads. So they discriminated against roads for people. But I got some people who got big portion of land in Meliside Out from the P N C. Talk to us.
Okay, just before I, um, may say, um, thanks to you to bring me on this program. First of all, I want to say something about the fact-finding mission before I go on to that. This so-called fact-finding person came with an agenda, a P N C agenda, didn't came for facts finding. And we saw that clearly tonight at that meeting. Where the regional chairman and the mayor would have put out their, their propaganda and false information. And they questioned them and closed the meeting. That was exactly what's going on there. We had to, um, um, beg for get that mic, I demand the mic, I had to demand the mic. Because when I would listen to all the false and propaganda was spreading there, I couldn't sit there and listen to that. I had to demand the mic to have to, to rebut to that situation. Now, you could recall that it was Walter Lawrence, a P N C city minister, who said to this country that she was only given jobs to P N C, um, persons.
Not even may have seen.
Not, you never hear that from the P P P. Look at all these jobs and contracts that is going on presently in Linden. The majority of people on that jobs is, is, is P N C. The mayor self said, the, the population in Linden is seventy-five percent black people, Afro-Guyanese people. Just lately, we gave over two billion dollars, uh, two billion in infrastructure contracts, roads and things to the people of Linden coming to the lands at Melis. Is as well aware that these same people give away when they were, when they lose the low confidence motion and give way to low field and the other act like a whole set of land, Mango and all them land at Meliside Out and things. And they're talking about road to, to, to the Borbis River. But you could recall that we are building roads to the, to the immediate Savannah and Borbis River. We just spent over three hundred million in a road to, to the, that must Savannah, where we have over, um, a thousand acres of soybean and, and corn cultivation going on there. That is production. So those are the things that is happening here in Region Ten. There's no, they talk about the, we done with judicious killing, that was something, that old story. The P N C over the last five years have not done anything for the people here in Region Ten. They came in twenty fifteen with a level plan, not even one, they haven't accomplished. But they don't have nothing to offer to the people. And that's the reason why they come with all this false propaganda. But the, the records, the writings on the wall. I have compared from nineteen sixty-four to nineteen ninety-two, the difference between the P N C and the P P P. And the streets are chalk. Because when the P A P P came in office in nineteen ninety-two, they were only one else center. Now we have talked of something else, center schools, more, more high schools and secondary and primary schools in the area. So the record will show clearly that the People's Progressive Party have done far more for the people here in Region Ten than the P N C or the A F C and P A P and you have ever done. And that's the problem with them.
Lovely. And so I would want to appeal to everyone watching this live. Share this live. You've heard the facts, you've heard the truth. This was a truth that was not presented, we were not given a chance to be presented to this so-called fact-finding mission. But again, like I started, I want to close on this note. I would want to ask any representative of the Guyana, uh, the, the U S Embassy in Guyana to, to take a look and a listen at this and look and a listen at that live that went down within the municipal conference room. And take that to Washington and find out and ask some of the things that these very, um, reps mentioned and talk about. Do your investigation, do your diligence and your digging before you come to say fact-finding. Because this so-called fact-finding, totally biased, yesterday around bias and non-partisan, they are sponsored by, by Rickford Bork. Sponsored by P N C, that is why they went straight into the office of the mayor. That is the biasness and they come and put it under the cloak of the U S, of the U S, trying to tarnish the image of the U S. And so I call on the ambassador, I call on the U S Embassy to denounce and reject this team and this body of people that are parading themselves in the form of U S delegations and U S delegates. This is not what, um, the, the democracy is about. This is not what the U S stands for. And if it is about town hall, as the town clerk of Linden municipality, the town hall meeting is supposed to be about the people and to hear the voice of the people. In one hour, every person here had a lengthy, they spoke at length. They were able to open and close their thoughts in what they want to say, while even sharing on, um, what transpired. And I am saying to you, the U S Embassy, please, please, put out the report, we are asking that you denounce this team. Because this team does not speak of your image and your, and, and what you stand for. So, um, in closing, I have five minutes because of time. Five minutes, I have to wrap up. So I'm gonna give everybody a minute or less, because we got more than five persons here to talk. Uh, Mr. Feria, no, no more than.
Yes, I understand we're gonna be wrapping up. But something I want to bring to the people of Linden that transpired in that meeting this evening at the town hall boardroom is when they ask about facts, the mayor and the chairman, they have their dossier or their rating to receive from the people. When Mr. Forsyte, our colleague, speak, they ask him if he have his facts and the loan that the government is sharing equally and to predominantly the negro people or Afro-Guyanese, he said, yes, he have the facts. Those facts are handed to them by Councillwoman Sancho Ali. And they leave it right there on the desk.
Yes.
Right there on the desk. So I want to know what is this committee?
Yes. Thank you, Madam. Show, show the, the, the U S Embassy the document that you shared with them, Sancho. Show them. I want the U S Embassy to look at this. I want the U S Embassy to, to, um, see that's the document that they left. We don't print these things, uh, because we wanna look good. These are, are, are the facts. These are real people that His Excellency is standing with. These are real people in that book that feel, felt the impact of this government. Mr. Rodford.
In closing, I don't need the one minute, but I'd like to say that, um, I was not surprised about the action this afternoon. The first thing, the broadcast of people here was limited, I felt, and that in itself signals something. Secondly, when you're gonna come extremely late to function, maybe I'm glad that it came in because I was there just after four and it started about five days ago. But when you're gonna spend your time, and I think the respect of the leadership of Linden and Region Ten should have been respectful to the people out there waiting, even said they were paid a courtesy call. They should have been the one wrapping up this thing. Yes, we have our time to preach out there just now, so let's get to the people. And that in itself says a lot about those individuals. As you are saying, my colleague, someone like to hear the voice, and I would extend it to say love. And that was the intention, to speak, to speak to all these youths. And maybe the persons, the residents here cannot see everything, anything. But I'm glad that we have this session so that people can get the facts and not the alternative.
Beautiful, it was a strategy. Sancho, wrap up thirty seconds.
Thank you, T C. Uh, I would just like to say to Lindeners that we should be cognizant of the information that is out there. We should make reading a priority. Let's get back to reading. Um, this is a four pages, uh, brochure of all of the government's development, the, um, plans, policies and everything that we would have done, um, for Linden. And as my colleague would have said, I presented this to every single member and they left it on the table. So I'll leave you to ponder on that for a moment.
Beautiful, completely. And wrapping up.
I want to say to the people of Linden, Region Ten and the country as whole, that the People's Progressive Party Civic is a party for all Guyanese. And we have no discrimination against Afro-Guyanese or any other Guyanese in this, in this country. And I want even to close and even saying that even the housing development, you could see since we returned to office, we gave over four hundred outlets to Lindeners in a short period of time. And we even recreate, um, put down one thousand homes for Lindeners in, in Linden. So I want you to encourage you that the People's Progressive Party is the best party for the Guyana development.
Thank you very much, Mr. Forsyte. And we will now have Mr. Jaren Canterbury.
I would like to say to each and every Guyanese in closing, that we should be very aware and very observant of such anti-development tactics that are being operated and pushed by the opposition. I would also like to engage the so-called fact-finding mission. When you arrive in Guyana, seek to be fair, seek to be biased. Do not show the city all their, seek to be unbiased. Because they, they are already biased. But seek to reach out to each and every Guyanese, not just one particular group. Seek to show us that you are fair. And I would also urge the U S Embassy to please, on behalf of the Guyanese people, investigate these individuals, each and everyone. Thank you.
I love that. Thank you. Talk to the U S Embassy though, they're my friend by the fireball.
Allow, allow me to, uh, rebond with the statement that the mayor made this afternoon. It was very disrespectful to you when the mayor indicated that fact-finding team that you were illegal, town clerk. I want to remind the mayor, in twenty sixteen, they had Mr. Michael Arcalies, they had Young Fugera and they had Ms. Orleen Overmuller. Mr. M- Michael Arcalies come out with the highest score. And at that time, the government, the P N C government disregarded Michael Arcalies and gave Overmuller the chair. And now you're saying that the commissioner here is illegal. But the commissioner now, you let Mr. Lennox Gaspard and they can't, and that will not be changed.
And what they don't, what they don't know and what they fail to understand is that the local government constitution, section seventeen and section twenty-seven speaks to the power of the commission. And the commission can appoint any of its officer to execute its business. The commission, the twenty thirteen act, which would, which would have, uh, superseded the, uh, twenty-eight oh one, which is the, the last amendment within twenty twelve.
Yeah.
You understand?
So I want to remind the mayor, Mr. Lennox Gaspard is not illegal.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for listening. And once again, I want to ask, share this live and the U S Embassy, tag them into this live. The U S Embassy need to debunk this, uh, fact-finding team and investigate them. Thank you very much for listening. I've been your host, Lennox Gaspar. Good night.